Counselors, can you hear me? This is Rob Klug.
Yes, Rob. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. So I'm Rob Klug. I'm the acting county engineer at this point. I'm with here today with Eva, the interim director of Public Works, and Susan Wilson, who is our program manager for the grants and other programs, including the TIP. And we're here to provide you with a work session to discuss the upcoming process we're going to go through for ultimately adopting the TIP before the end of the year. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Susan, please.
Morning, counsel. Next slide, please. So the goal of this work session is for the council to review the six-year Transportation Improvement Program and the 2022 Annual Construction Program. The annual construction program is the first year of the Transportation Improvement Program. And then we do need to adopt the six-year Transportation Improvement Program and the annual construction program before the budget is adopted. That is state law. Next, please. So today we'll be talking about some guiding principles and legalities. We'll talk about how the relationship is between the Capital Facilities Plan, which is the 20-year plan, and how that relates to the Transportation Improvement Program, the evaluation system. We'll talk about some funding details, the construction schedule. We'll talk about a few changes with 179th Street area improvements, some risk and unknowns, and the next steps. Next, please. So the guiding principles that council has set is to pay off debt service. And then we move to the safety and preservation projects. We preserve our existing assets. And then our capital projects, that's what we build. Thirdly, and the capital projects consist of projects such as 99th Street, 179th Street, those larger type of capital projects. And then, as Rob had mentioned, the Transportation Improvement Program and Annual Construction Program is a state mandated program per the Revised Code of Washington and the Washington Advisory Code. So all the projects that we work on, they have to be in the capital improvement, excuse me, the annual construction program and the Transportation Improvement Program. The county engineer is required to develop and apply an evaluation system for our capital transportation projects. For RCW, council is required to adopt the Transportation Improvement Program and Annual Construction Program before the budget is adopted. And then, in addition, the Transportation Improvement Program is consistent with the 20-year comprehensive plan via the Capital Facilities Program. Next slide, please. So how does a project get onto the TIP? It really starts with the comprehensive plan. Starts with the Washington Growth State Management Plan, goes to the 20-year Capital Facilities Plan. And then, in addition, the program is consistent with arterial atlas and the sub-area circulation plans. And then what we do in programming is we take all the 20-year Capital Facilities Plan projects, and we evaluate them to produce a six-year Transportation Improvement Program, which is an implementation of the 20-year Capital Facilities Plan. And then we go to the Annual Construction Program, which is the first year of the TIP and to begin construction on those projects. We also create a capital road project number. That is a requirement by the County Road Administration Board. And then we move on to building these projects. Next slide, please. I'm going to hand this slide over to Chris Carl. He's going to talk about the evaluation system criteria.
Good morning, counsel and other attendees. Chris Carl, I work underneath Susan Wilson, capital program engineer. I'm going to talk about the evaluation system, as Susan mentioned previously, the 20-year Capital Facilities Plan. And the majority of our scoring is based on those larger projects from the Capital Facilities Plan, where the scoring system comes in. We also have secondary grant opportunities with our ongoing programs, mainly safety, bridge projects and sidewalks. They're not as competitive within this larger project, but they have their own options in terms of funding opportunities with them. But being that this is the larger capital facilities projects, the evaluation system criteria has been developed over the years. Four main categories: safety, economic development, mobility, and then the catch-all of the other, give some other aspects of where the scoring comes from. I'm not going to go into the actual elements of it. Could be a long-winded thing, but some of the bigger things that fall under each. Safety is accidents, history of accidents and frequency, as well as roadway deficiencies, geometry, and that sort of thing. Economic development revolves around the vacant billable lands model, which I think is also a council goal. And mobility ties into the arterial atlas, which is also a council goal. Multimodal pedestrian and bikes, as well as bus access. All these types of things give us points. And again, this is built based on our larger funding, whether it be federal or state through the Transportation Improvement Board, for example, where their scoring mirrors these elements that we've developed through the years. So, you know, these are logical and sound criteria that we've also developed through technical groups such as Planning Commission, Develop Engineering Advisory Board, and the Regional Transportation Council Committee, excuse me, Advisory Committee under our RTC directly. And as I said previously, this is also developed through the council, so it is in parallel to your adopted policies. I mentioned previously the vacant billable lands model, links to the arterial atlas and that sort of thing. And we also tie it into concurrency codes, which is another council item as well. In this process, we also take into account industry standards such as the Highway Safety Manual, Target Zero, and other things to that effect. And we also build in the public outreach, which we have done through either open houses and the county fair in years past. Obviously, COVID restricts us, but what we could do in terms of in-person. But we have been looking for other opportunities to expand the public outreach digitally. That's pretty much it. Any sort of updates to these as a county, as a county council entity? So that would run for you if there's ever changes in the future. With that, I'll turn it back to Susan.
Okay, next slide, please.
So I'm going to go ahead and just raise a point here because, you know, especially my district, which is predominantly very rural, and with the growth that we've seen, lots of developments. We have lots of load, road structure that I get complaints about from my constituents. And I drive through it and see it, experience it myself, you know, from Ward Road to 99th or 179th. You know, we have so much development and we're still pretty far behind in getting caught up or ahead of. I mean, in an ideal world, we would have the infrastructure in place before the development comes, so it's a smoother process. But so I know this is really hard and complicated work for engineers. And also, there's a lot of draw on limited resources. And it's hard to get caught up, much less ever get to the point where we're actually providing infrastructure ahead, anticipating development, which a lot of states have successfully done, putting in road structure. The point I want to make besides that one is that, you know, we're looking at a resolution. We're looking at making not only a political statement, but more of a direction to anticipate another crossing, a corridor, in addition to five and 205. And yet I've seen no real plan to anticipate that. You know, what are the major arterials going to be if we have a new crossing? I mean, we have a role in that. And what is best for our comprehensive plan? What is best for our development north of the river? Where do we envision and see, engineering-wise and otherwise, where another corridor would cross and then what road structure north of the river would support it? So I'm hoping someone can speak to that because, you know, again, if you don't know, we're working on making a public statement about encouraging that third, the planning for that additional corridor.
Rob, would you like to talk about?
Radio silence, which is what I've experienced for the last few years. Anyway, go ahead. Was that Counselor Bowerman?
I think I was being asked to step in, Counselor. Rob Klug.
Go ahead, Rob, please.
So Counselor, I understand your concern. We've had discussions about this before. And as a transportation manager, when we've had these discussions before, my blinders, my viewpoint was that this is a by-state issue and that we have a certain role in that. But it really is something that, in my opinion, and take it for what it's worth. But in my opinion, it sounds like it's something that really the legislature should be talking about. And we can, you know, we, the county, have a role in that. But until the legislators decide to take on the task, we can only do so much because both sides have to agree you're going to move forward on that project. It's Oregon side and Washington.
And the Yeah, so I guess it falls within the only do so much category. What can we do? What, from our view, looks like the best place to inform the process? Whether it's RTC, Oregon, or our legislature, what is Clark County? What does our expert view of this say? Where does it go?
I don't want to derail your conversation, but I'd like to focus this conversation because the Transportation Improvement Program is a very specific implementation of the Capital Facilities Program. And we're talking about the financial model and work associated with building what we've already agreed upon. And I think what you're talking about is a larger process that would be included in many other things, including the comprehensive plan. So we're very focused right now on the implementation of the six years to build the projects that we have in the CFP that have ranked at this point. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we shouldn't talk about what you're saying. But if we can, I'd like to focus on the specifics of what the TIP is doing. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, I've walked into this cement wall at every juncture. So yeah, it's acceptable because, but I think what I said is important. And at some point, we're going to start making some headway on it. With the infrastructure plan coming into place, hopefully nationally, we may start this conversation at the RTC as well because there may be grant funding available to do this important planning. Most of these plans, and the one we're looking at today, are very much subordinate and connected to foreplanning that I just mentioned. So anyway, let's move on unless there are other comments or questions.
Counselor, if I may, this is Eva, interim Public Works Director. I would like to just caveat, or rather kind of build off of one thing that Robert mentioned, which is we will be looking at a comprehensive plan update. And the comprehensive plan is really the umbrella under which this six-year Transportation Improvement Program sits. And so when we go through the exercise of updating the comprehensive plan, at that time, we will take these more holistic looks at our transportation system within Clark County and more than likely be able to speak to this in more detail and perform some degree of analysis, at the very least to identify what our county perspective might be.
Thank you, Eva.
And Eva, when does that process start? Again, I think you said earlier, but I missed when it starts.
My understanding is that the kickoff of the next pump plan update is actually going to be next year. Susan, Rob, is that accurate?
If Oliver's on the line, he can give some more definition. I don't know if Oliver's still on the line.
Maybe Michael knows.
Yes, I am still on the line. Thank you, Eva and Rob. The determinant of when we begin the next plan update is really going to fall on when and how soon OFM, Office of Financial Management, releases their population forecast. My understanding in checking with staff at OFM is that they just received the census information and they're going to be working on that. The state legislature, by statute, indicates that Clark County and other counties, in terms of our schedule, should be able to complete our own plan update by June 2025. That process usually take two to three years. So we can start it in late 2022 or early 2023, depending on how soon we get the OFM numbers. And then the council picking up what growth we should be planning for. I also, in terms of the discussion that Rob and Counselor was having, yes, during the comprehensive plan update, you can discuss transportation issues. I will only add that, as Rob indicated, issue of future corridor across the bridge or across the Columbia River is going to take multiple agencies. I think the question is going to be what role would the county play? And what role would WashDOT and ODOT play? I would think that that would be, in my opinion, that would should really occur outside of the comprehensive planning update. However, the reason I say so is that that's going to be an ongoing project. It could start with a summit of the community in terms of how do you want to grow in the future? Imagine the county having a population of 1 million. What will happen? Those type of scenario planning could occur outside of the regular plan update because I'm not sure you have the capacity or the bandwidth to do both at the same time simultaneously. It could happen after the comp plan is completed. But doing both at the same time could be very problematic because assuming it's WashDOT and involving Rob's group, we are going, we are not going to finish the plan in a two-year or three-year cycle. It may require outside help to look at where would the feasibility of another corridor be. So it's an extensive process, in my opinion, but it is doable. The question is going to be who and what agency would take the lead? Is it WashDOT coordinating with ODOT? What role would the planning department and Public Works play? And what role would RTC play? I don't know that yet, but those are some of the conversations that may occur in the future by posing a question to the community. What do you, what the community wants to see? How do you want to grow going forward? Assuming it will eventually happen, whether it's in 2015, 2060, when Clark County reaches 100, a million, what will be the movement of goods and people across the Columbia River? So I'll leave it at that, but I'm not sure that is something that we can have the conversation during the comp plan update, but it is a separate project, in my opinion.
Yeah, so thanks for those additional comments. And that was exactly the planning metric used in the visioning study over 10 years ago, the million person mark. So the data is there, the visioning's done, there was a start, and now we're more than halfway there. And obviously, growth kind of goes up exponentially. So we're getting behind very quickly, and I understand the bureaucratic processes are very complex, and everyone wants to push it off. So anyway, I've said what I needed to say and put on the public record. Are there any other comments? Because I understood you still have some more of the briefing to do.
I do want to state, Counsel Medjavi, that the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program, is the implementation of the Capital Facilities Plan. So if I were to apply for any external funding sources, state or federal grants outside the Capital Facilities Plan, they're going to be thrown out. They will not accept them. So that is my box. And so that's why we prioritize. But yeah, it really starts with, you know, following in order with the 20-year Capital Facilities Plan. All the funding partners do request to receive, you know, a proof that it is on our plan.
I have to make that. Thank you, Susan. So there is additional briefing, is there not, on this topic?
Okay, so moving on to the next slide. This chart shows how the transportation money is being distributed throughout the program. So this program, 2022 to 2026, is about a $228 million program. And I just want to note that there's going to be slight changes in the numbers at the adoption in November. And the reason being is we haven't, we don't have all of our grant announcements. We don't know if we're going to get the loan of $6.6 million. There's also timelines with construction. There's a two- to three-year timeline with construction with projects that may be anticipated to hit the books this year, but will not hit until next year. So I just want to let you know, these numbers could be shifting a tad bit at your adoption. So currently, we have about 73% in the urban area and about 27% being spent in the rural road area. And Counsel Medjavi, I heard you about the rural road area. I absolutely agree. So right now, we have the urban projects, 120, 121 million approximately. We have some of our ongoing programs, advanced right-of-way bridge program at 13 million, road preservation at just under $40 million, the rural road about 6 million, sidewalk ADA, and then safety. But the road preservation, bridges and culverts, and transportation safety, the box down there in the note. Usually I have my pointer, so I'm able to point at these things. I just can't do it on the digital meetings. So they all intermesh with each other. So as you can see, for example, the bridge and culvert program, it's $13.3 million. It's actually $13 million that's being spent in the rural road program. So about $62 million, $2 million is being spent in the rural road program, which equals about 27% of the $228 million that's being spent in the six-year program. As you can see, we have about $72 million in federal and state grants. Of that $72 million, about $36 million is projected grants. And we have currently, right now, about $35 million secured grants. We are still waiting to hear on other grant announcements. Traffic impact fees, about $31 million. Real estate excise tax, we're relying on about $35 million, $36 million. Road Fund is our biggest funder of about $80 million. And then we have other, we have county arterial preservation monies. That is distributed through the County Road Administration Board. And it's fuel tax to support some preservation efforts on certain types of classification of roads. And then about a million is partnerships. That's to fund 68th Street sidewalks with the City of Vancouver and some of the traffic signal optimization projects with the Washington State Department of Transportation. And then we have an anticipated $6.6 million loan. Any questions about this? Next slide, please. So this is really the heart of our program. The 2022-2027 Transportation Improvement Program is about, again, $228 million. This is what we plan to build over the course of the six years. This does not include what we have under design permitting and land acquisition. So this is only the construction. So we have about 40 projects right now under design permitting and land acquisition and plus construction. So the great projects are currently, are projects that are currently under construction or have been completed. For example, you have Laido Bridge, Salmon Creek Avenue Smith. Those are completed projects. Highway 99 at 99th Street, we did some improvements on the corner. And that is, I think we have punch list items left. Manley Road should be completed by the end of this year. Highway 99 Preservation, we actually received a National Highway System Grant of about $4 million. So that one should be completed by the end of this year. I think we just have punch list items there. 134th Street Corridor Adaptive, this was an air quality grant, a really low match ratio of 13%. And this, we are hoping to get out to construction by this, you know, in the next couple of months or so. The, oh, and then 10th Avenue, that is currently under construction. We still have quite a bit of work to do on that. That will probably be completed by the end of 2022, maybe fall of '23. So the blue projects are the urban holding projects. I'll skip around a little bit. We have 10th Avenue, I just talked about that. We have 15th Avenue. That's the new extension that runs from 179th Street up to 10th Avenue. Hopefully, we'll start construction on that in 2025. We also have I-5, 179th Street improvements. These are the gap sections between Delphale and 15th. So as you probably already know, WashDOT, the Washington State Department of Transportation, is responsible for the replacement of the bridge and building the road under the bridge. So we, there may or may not be gaps between Delphale and 15th, but we are making sure we account for those in this, in this program. Moving on to 179th Street Intersection Improvements at 29th and 50th, we're hoping to start construction end of 2025, '24. And then Delphale constructing that new alignment from 179th Street to 189th Street in 2025. The yellow projects are the fully funded projects or grant committed projects. Starting in, hopefully, 2023, we'll go to construction on a roundabout on 119th Street at 152nd Avenue. This is a safety project. We received about $4 million in safety money to support this project. Also, Northeast 99th Street from 94th Avenue to 503, this is our first roundabout corridor. We will have three roundabouts at various intersections throughout that corridor. We'll also build a new extension of road by the landfill out there. And then we'll upgrade the remainder of road. Hizzadale Avenue Sidewalk, we're doing some infill sidewalk there, again, mostly grant-funded. Mason Creek Culvert, we'll be installing a new culvert, hopefully, if we get our construction money for that project. So we won't know about that until 2023. Davis Bridge Replacement, we just received another half a million dollars from the County Road Administration Board to help support this project. Northeast 152nd Avenue from Patton to 99th Street. This is also grant-funded through the Regional Transportation Council. We applied for another, oh, $2.5, $3 million to support the construction. It looks like it made it on the list to be funded. So you, whoever serves on the RTC board, you'll see that information come through in the next month or so. 68th Street Sidewalk, this is, this is just not a sidewalk project. This is, this is just not a sidewalk project. We'll be building six-foot sidewalks, four crossings, and then we'll also be lighting those, some of those crosses. Actually, we'll be lighting all of those crossings. That is a standard that we must follow. This is a partnership with the City of Vancouver. We do have a lot of state and federal funds participating in this project. Munch Road is a preservation and safety project. Again, grant money has been committed to building this project. 182nd at 503. This is a partnership project with the Washington State Department of Transportation. We only own 30% of that road. So we are participating in paying our share of about $380,000. The state did receive some safety money to complete this, this intersection project. They'll be installing a roundabout. They will take lead on this project. So they're hoping to go out to construction in 2022. On the Bridge Preservation Safety Project, we just received word that we received some funding from the, from, from some federal funding of $5.5 million to support the bridges. And then in addition to that, some safety money to support some preservation and safety components on St. John's and 78th Street. So that's where you're seeing that $11.3 million there. Highway 99 Sidewalks, we did receive some RTC funding to support some design efforts between 102nd and 104th. And then the remaining projects are listed in white, there's no shading there, are the next tier of transportation improvement projects. They're coming up in the ranking evaluation. Or they're the ongoing programs. Again, the ongoing programs have their own evaluation system because safety projects, preservation projects, bridge sidewalks will not rank in, in high priority such as against a large capital project like 99th Street or 179th Street. So we have Salmon Creek Avenue that's coming up in the priority array. So that you'll see that program have funding in the latter part of the program. And then 179th Street from 29th to 50th, or from 15th to 50th, I should say, those are kind of working together. Northeast 172nd Avenue from 122nd to 179th, that's coming up high in priority with congestion and mobility, a lot of development out there. And then the Highway 99 sidewalks, of course, we're always looking for funding opportunities there. And then our six-year ongoing programs, Road Preservation, Sidewalks, Bridges, Culvert, Safety, and then the Rural Road and a couple of the other miscellaneous type projects. Those are about 38% of the program. So we have $86 million or 36% that support the ongoing programs. And then we have 62% for the larger capital projects. And a lot of these ongoing programs are also listed in the construction start schedule. Any questions about this?
Any councillor questions? I know we're getting a little behind. I just want to, by giving an example of a specific location, I just want to publicly say this as to how we do our priorities, especially again, out in the rural area. The Postal Neighborhood Association years ago brought an issue to me that I brought to your division, and I followed up from time to time. I used to drive that way myself, 199th and 500. What I've been told is that it's a WashDOT intersection, that we have no, nothing to do or say about it. It's in a county, it's on a public road, the traffic is 50, 70 miles an hour. There is absolutely no sight view at all. If you stop at the stop sign, you can't see east or west. And so I, I don't want to have an instance where we have a carload of teenagers fully in front of a tractor trailer because there's no sight view. There's trees and bushes in the right of way that block the view. And over the years, there's been no improvement whatsoever. So I am just very concerned as to how we're measuring our priorities and, and how we're working with WashDOT on some of these rural intersections.
Councillor, thank you for the information. I know, I know I've had the conversation with you before. It is WashDOT's responsibility. I will follow up with, by, my peer over there asking that they do what they can within the right of way and look at it as a potential future improvement based upon their party system.
So does that conclude the presentation? Is there some action that we need to?
I, I have three more slides. I'll be really quick unless you guys don't want me to.
Please continue, Susan.
Okay, next slide, please. So we've had a few changes on 179th Street Area Improvements. I just want to state that, or just a reminder that the state funding to replace the 179th Street Bridges, they still won't get the bulk of their money until 2025 for construction. They will receive about $2 million in 2023, and they have some federal funds that support their practical design and their, their design efforts. So we are continuing to work with the state, so we don't have any throwaway in this area. I'll go ahead and hand it over to Rob and Eva to talk about some of the cost increases and the design complexities.
Definitely. Thank you, Susan. So, Council, we have had an unanticipatedly high level of turnover within the sections that are primarily responsible for product delivery. This turnover is above historical levels and has strained the apparatus that would deliver these projects on the I-5 Northeast 179th Corridor. In addition to that, our current estimates for the current door, sorry, for the corridor are approximately $85.4 million. This represents a approximately $19 million increase as compared to the original $66.5 million estimate that was presented and adopted in Option 8. I think it was in 2019. This increase in cost is driven by more than just the cost of construction. It's also driven by increases in the technical and financial complexities associated with these projects. Our current forecasts do show that the Road Fund is able to absorb this cost increase while remaining above a critical level of fund balance. However, the increase in cost does reduce our flexibility within the Road Fund. We did complete an analytical exercise to identify worst-case scenarios for each project that resulted in a worst-case scenario total estimate of $126 million. And we are currently looking at mitigation strategies for those elements that involve succession planning, new hiring strategies, as well as identifying potential cost control measures to control or speak to the increases in project complexity. Rob, if you could discuss the project complexity element, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Eva. So in general, when we determine what the costs of our projects, we have some level of design done that gives us confidence that we understand the topography, the, the challenges of the road. The fact of the matter is, when the projects were moved forward for the 179th Street Corridor, the, the list of projects, the process moved faster, too fast for us to be able to have adequate review of concerns and challenges in the design of the projects when those estimates were compiled. And so there are things that are found when you start getting into the detailed estimates, such as locations where there is a culvert that we find out has to become a fish-passable culvert that has sensitive lands around it and soft soil that liquefies under, that has a high likelihood of liquefying under earthquake. And so that goes from being a replacement of a culvert in kind to potentially being a bridge. And all these, each of the projects has some challenges associated with it because they were estimated without any design being done as opposed to being able to do some detail review. And that was reflected based upon the short turnaround time for the costs necessary to move forward. So happy to take any questions about that. Otherwise, I'll hand it back to Eva.
Thank you, Rob. As I mentioned earlier, we are currently diving into the details, working on modeling, addressing on both the revenue side, the expenditure side, and the engineering side so that we can contain the cost increases, the complexities. However, it is extremely likely, and in fact, it has already been the case, that our timeline has extended past the timeline that was originally reviewed when Option 8 was presented.
Okay, so a couple of risks that I want council to be aware of is, we already talked about the 179th Street modifications. We have about $6 million in state and federal grants that we won't know about until September, September or November. And so some of the projects, if we don't receive the, the funding, we will delay the project. So basically, the money follows the projects. So that's, you'll, you'll see some shifts there during the adoption, if that's the case. Changes to the traffic impact fees, the traffic impact fees is, it's very volatile. It's, as you know, it's market-driven. I've seen the traffic impact fees as low as half a million dollars to as high as $10 million. So to project those, it's, it's very challenging. We constantly update those, those forecasts. In addition, we like to reassess the tip on a, on a weekly basis if we have to, on a monthly basis. And so the tip at all times is always updated. And we try to keep up to date with all the different changing of revenues and expenditures. Next slide, please. So today, August 18th, we're, we're having a council work session. We're, we're refining numbers. We're looking at all, all the construction projects. We're getting new grants, that type of stuff. Public involvement, we have had a lot of open houses on our transportation projects. 10th Avenue, 179th Street, 99th, 68th Street Sidewalk, for example. In addition, we've increased our public education and outlook with the mailers. We are actually going a mile radius as opposed to half a mile. In October, we plan to meet with neighborhood associations. In addition, we will have a TIP open house in consultation with the Regional Transportation Council, City of Vancouver. I've also invited the state. And then we'll have digital marketing campaigns. We'll have a presence on social media platforms such as Nextdoor and the internet, Facebook, Twitter. And then hopefully, September, we're going to pull our, our SEPA. And if the council wants to meet again in September, we'll be happy to meet with you to go over any changes that we have, if, if we can, if there's anything new. And then we hope to adopt our program on November 16th. After we, oh, I forgot to mention the Planning Commission hearing and work session then, the Development Engineering Advisory Board. So we'll also meet with them for the TIP presentation too. But if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Susan, did you need an answer from us right now as to whether we want a September work session? And I guess I should ask, what is your recommendation on whether we schedule one now? So do we need to make?
I don't think much is going to change. However, the communication will, will likely throw, blow through Eva and Kathleen. And so, yeah, a decision can be made later. I'm, I'm flexible.
Okay, any comments by any councillor?
Yes, we hear a great deal on the news, the national news, about the federal monies available for infrastructure. What impact might this have, if any, on Park County?
Absolutely. We actually applied for $20 million to support the efforts at the I-5 179th Street Area Improvements. So that includes WashDOT's portion and includes all of our portion. I had submitted applications to the Congressional Delegation for $20 million plus $5 million to support the 99th Street Roundabout Corridor project. So I understand that we are on the list, but it still needs to be passed through it, through different areas of Congress.
Look, if there's anything that the council could do to assist with being an advocate in that area, I trust that you would let us know. And is this in addition to the five, six million in federal monies that you mentioned in the past? That was going to be used in, in the past, it was planned for?
Yes, yes, it would be in addition to. I want to be conservative in the numbers because I didn't want to have to rely on, you know, that amount of money in our program. So there is a little bit, just in case we do get funding, we need to be able to execute contracts right away. So I put a little bit of money in the program to support that, but the bulk of it is in addition to.
Yeah, thank you. Could you go back to the 179th Improvements slide? It's either the next one or? I just wanted to take a little time to slow down here and spend a little more time on this slide for the benefit of the public and to make sure that the importance of this information is not overlooked. This increase is, is quite dramatic. And as staff mentioned earlier in the call, many of the staff who were involved in the preliminary work a couple of years ago are no longer working with the county. And I do want to thank those of you who are on the call and presenting today for the work you're doing to try to bridge the gaps that are being uncovered and are developing. So, so thank you. And I'm very glad that you're there and doing this work because we need to be clear about this situation. A project that was rushed through two years ago without adequate work done is now proving to have at least one-third more costs associated with it, and that's a best-case scenario. And this is because it was not dealt with appropriately at the time. And though questions were asked about financial modeling and about projections, they were brushed off. And we are now dealing with the impacts of that. And this is a very complicated set of projects, both in an engineering understanding as far as figuring out how it's going to work, and also the deals that were put together to make it happen. And for the funding, to get to the $66.5 million, we had extensive conversations about dramatically increasing traffic impact fees, about increasing the Road Fund levy by 1% and dedicating it solely to this, about dipping more into REIT II, about a very tenuous financial structure that now isn't even sufficient. So I appreciate and I'm grateful for the fact that you've done the work to figure out how to cover this additional $20 million in the best-case scenario. And also want to underscore that what was said was that most of that can be covered with Road Fund. What that means is that Road Fund, that amount of Road Fund then, isn't necessarily available for other projects. So it's wonderful to be able to pay our bills. But this also means there will be other bills we can't take in, projects we can't do. And even looking at the, at the six-year plan, most of 2025, 26 is the 179th set of projects. Very little else was actually on that list. So the county citizens should be aware of that, that this is a huge project and it is draining a lot of resources. Because we are committed to it, I hope that it will have the benefits that were claimed at the beginning. But what we are seeing is that as we move forward on projects, it would be to the county's benefit for us to take the time to do adequate financial projections, to do the proper modeling, and to make sure that we understand what we're getting into. I also hope, I understand that probably not a lot is going to change by September as we're talking about the, the ACP and the TIP. But as we move forward, while I have great faith in the team that we have right now, the best-case scenario is often not the way it turns out, that it does go a little bit closer to the worst-case scenario. So I hope that we will have public updates about continuing, our continuing understanding of this set of projects. And to once again, come back to appreciating the work that this team is doing right now. A lot of that work from some conversations we've had does appear to be figuring out how to get the most for our money to streamline some parts of the projects and to really maximize the work that's going on. And I know that that maximize the work that's going on. And I know that that is no small task, and really do appreciate it. And I hope that, uh, the council will take into consideration that we need to, uh, be more diligent in the future about the projects that, uh, we are considering, and that the public will also hear this, and, uh, especially for those who asked questions two years ago during the process, to recognize that many of those questions, while they were brushed off, were incredibly valid. Um, so thank you.
So I'll just add to that. So, uh, obviously, I think the council has been pretty diligent. Uh, what we've, what we had lacked was transparency between, uh, staff and the executive side answering our questions back when. Uh, so I just want to add my thanks. Uh, you know, the complexity of what Public Works does is enormous. It's amongst the most challenging in the county, and so certainly the most resource-constrained, uh, area. So intellectually-challenging, engineering-challenging, uh, and we are blessed by the team we have now. So, uh, Rob, Susan, and Eva, thank you so much for uncovering this, and also all the daily work you're doing. Um, so we look for better outcomes in the future. And I want to, uh, thank the talented team that we have, uh, for this presentation today, and all those that we've had in the past, although we, we did have some shortfalls a couple of years ago with no explanation. Um, but again, those people are now gone. Uh, so County Manager, thank you. Uh, and it, I mean, it just kind of highlights what the charter has done to county government as far as, uh, dividing the work and, and who's responsible for what. Uh, and this is one highlight of it. So, uh, anything else, Kathleen, uh, from Public Works on this? Or are we ready? I think, I mean, it's ten-twenty-four already. I, I think we had some really good discussion. Uh, maybe we need five minutes before we get into, uh, our council time?
Uh, I do believe that's the end of the, uh, presentation from Public Works, unless the council has any other questions. And certainly, if you would like to have a five-minute break before council time, um, that, we can certainly do that.
Okay, a, any other questions by council? And would you like five minutes?
Yes.
Okay, temple, okay. Yeah, so let's take five minutes. Thank you again for the presentation. Uh, and we look forward to the next one.
Thanks for your support. I appreciate it.
Thank you, counsel.
Uh, ten-thirty, please, to resume, Kathleen.
Thank you, council.